You've had your questions.
I did, oh, thank you.
Plenty of them this time.
Really, I, that's why I'm the only person over here.
All right, we're reconvening our meeting. We're out of executive session and we're on to education, item number two. Mrs. Kepi, would you mind moving that, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda item. It's HIB, it's incident number two zero one five slash M dash three is unsubstanti- unsub- unsubstantiated. Sorry, I'm tired.
Yeah. I need a second?
Second.
All call vote, please. Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Mr. Bevitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Yes. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten twenty-five P. M.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is officially adjourned, ten twenty-five P. M. Thank you very much for coming, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Education workshops, special action preliminary budget hearing meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven thirty-six. Please silence or turn off your cell phones and note the locations of the emergency exits. I'd like to take a moment of silence for our men and women in the military. If we could stand for the flag signal.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members of all district schools, the Herald News, The Trends, The Record, Aim West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the administrative building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, please. Mr. Bevitt?
Yes, here.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Dever? Mr. Drew?
Present.
Mr. Foodie?
Present.
Mrs. Kepi? Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Robbins? Mrs. Schultz?
Here.
Executive session resolution, resolved that the board go into executive session at nine P. M. for approximately sixty minutes for the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs, the superintendent search, matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session meeting minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions.
Need a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Who will be taking action?
I think so.
That's what they should do.
They're gonna be taking action.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Well, first, Happy St. Patty's Day to everyone, and we have an upcoming St. Joseph's Day on Thursday, so it's a festive week, and it was just Pi Day two days ago, so it's a very exciting week. But I wanted to report on, again, the PARC assessments are rolling along. We've had about two irregularities based on the fact that after testing, we found that two students actually had cell phones on their person, however, they did not use them for anything, so unfortunately, it's not a situation like there was if they even watched them, where a student actually did a Twitter report based off a question that got specifically a little too scary for the folks over at Pearson and for the state and so forth. But fortunately, we're not seeing anything like that. The students who are testing are doing the best they possibly can. Any little glitches that have come about, most of them coming from the information coming into us, is being taken care of. Kate Brennan, our director of testing, has been doing a wonderful job of that. B. Bars and the technology crew also have been on top of any glitches that come about, so I report that that's where we are at this point. Also, at this time, I'd like to notify you once again that unfortunately, our high school did not participate in the parade in New York City today, but they will be participating with our neighboring town of Ringwood on Saturday afternoon. They'll be marching down Skyline Drive, so we look forward to seeing them there. So, as of right now, since there wasn't really much time from last week to now, that's where we are. That's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rashika.
Presentation, yes, Mr. Siegel. Eric Siegel is supervisor of science. He has to share some very important information with us this evening. I guess we'll have to move.
Do you need us to move, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize, it'll just take a minute.
No problem.
With regards to the questions? I think we're getting to that area a little bit too.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Eric Siegel. I'm the science supervisor. I'm just gonna talk briefly about a new set of state standards called the Next Generation Science Standards. I have about seven or eight slides, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have. So, I'll start off with, what are these standards? It's a complete set of national standards from kindergarten to twelfth grade, and it's a frame shift. And so, it's not what you know, it's what you can do with that knowledge. The other emphasis is, we want students to model what scientists do every day. That's gather information, analyze data, present that data, argue, and argue from point of evidence. It's a blend of skills and content. So, it's not enough to, let's say, know the phases of moon, but to understand what's happening in the solar system that causes those shadows to appear. And there's a new emphasis, that's new to our state standards, and it's engineering. So, in two sentences, these new standards is science asking questions, and it's engineering, which is designing solutions. Okay? I also wanna tell you what these standards are not. It's not a federal mandate. There are twenty-six lead states that wrote these standards over many, many decades, and we were one of them. It's not Common Core, and it's not PARC. There are no standardized tests yet that would assess these new standards. And it's not a prescription on how to teach. Teachers still will be able to develop and to execute their craft in the classroom without being dictated to by a set of state standards. And the Next Generation Science Standards make a point to say they're agnostic as to how these standards are to be delivered in the classroom. It's not all at once, and it's not an exhaustive list. When they wrote what a science student should know by the end of each grade, from K to twelve, they took note to say districts have a lot of discretion to add information, that this is the minimum, it's not the maximum. And finally, it's not all content. It's also very much interwoven skill sets. Okay? Just a bit of a timeline. Last July, the State Board of Education adopted, at the end of the five-year cycle, new state standards and put in a timeline for implementation. They delayed and staggered the timeline in deference to Common Core and PARC. By the start of the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, all our curricula from grade six to twelve will need to be rewritten, and at the start of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, K to five. We'll see later on the agenda, District Science Committee, composed of sampling of K to eight science teachers, which are gonna be instrumental in helping decide which resources are best and how to proceed with these standards. So far, thirteen states have adopted, with eleven more in the process. In terms of a conceptual shift, if you roll the clock back, it used to be the teacher would write a lesson plan, and it would say the teacher will do. And then it morphed over time to the students will know, to where we are now. To meet proficiency in the new science standards, the sentence is, students who can demonstrate understanding can do, they can build, they can design, they can create, they can model. It's not enough to know a list of facts, you have to show and be able to do something with those, with those facts. How did we get here? This was not put together by pie-in-the-sky professors in a laboratory in isolation. The genesis of this, after roll back almost thirty years, to some very important cognitive studies, how students learn, what should a science, what should a student know who's proficient in science? And the National Research Council put together a major report, out of which begat, at the end, these new national standards. But the writers were not one subset of people. There were a variety of classes, but two-thirds were public school science teachers, the people who actually will do these or execute these standards in the classroom, were the ones who had the greatest hand in writing it, in addition to engineers and scientists and three Nobel laureates. And the organizations that sponsored and directed this development was not the federal government, it was the National Science Teachers Association, companies like Boeing, G. E., DuPont, Cisco, Carnegie Institute. There were no federal dollars associated with the creation of these standards. And what do they look like? Here's an example. If I just can direct you to the bottom of the screen, it says HS PS one dash four. That means high school, physical science, first standard. And in a high school physical science class, like a physics or a chemistry class, or geoscience class, or STEM class, by the end of twelfth grade, or excuse me, by the end of fourth grade, by the end of twelfth grade, apologies, the fourth grade, students should be able to develop a model to illustrate that the release of absorption of energy from the chemical reaction depends upon the changes in total bond energy. Let me break that down very simply. They have to be able to take the knowledge and develop a model to explain what's happening in the real world. It's not enough to know that if A goes to B, C happens. You have to be able to demonstrate in an experiment, in a graphic, in an illustration, why. And finally, I'll leave you with this, if nothing else. At the top is a list of directions you might see on Mathquest, and the old way or the poor way of teaching science would be to say, memorize this list of instructions. But now, with the Next Generation Science Standards, it's here's a map, design an alternate rule, because you don't know what obstacles you're going to encounter down the road. And if you're just going by a list of directions stepwise, and have no concept of how to use a map tube, go around, roadblock, you're stuck if two eighty-seven is blocked. So, if anything, I think this last slide is the most important, that for science education to be effective, so for us to meet these standards, they have to design, they have to use models, they have to create. Any questions? Mr. Foodie?
Please, I saw in the readings that there's thirteen states that have adopted this, and eleven more in the process of.
Mm-hmm.
Um... Does this have anything to do with us redoing our science rooms and...
Sure, the major impetus for my request for the lab rooms is, we need to have more hands-on activities and more lab space for those classes to recur. Right now, a lot of teachers have to bump out of classrooms. And what, let's say, a chemistry teacher, if he has to leave his classroom and go somewhere else, he can't set up the labware and the experiments he would ordinarily if he were, you know, had a designated lab room.
Okay. My next question would be, um... So, I wanna go back twelve years, so two thousand three, two thousand four. Um... We had roughly twelve hundred more students, and we were making do with what we had. Is there a state push that's making us have more, you know, chemistry classes or physics? Or is this something that the district alone are doing?
No, a lot of schools are adding STEM classrooms. There's great emphasis to build science rooms dedicated to activities. And one of the reasons, remember I mentioned the engineering piece is brand new. So, we need spaces where, where the rooms are mobile, move around the tables, there's outlets and sockets, it's not a rug-forwards tile, and a lot of lab space where students can build and design, you know, experiments and test their ideas, how to build a better rocket ship, how to make this pinwheel, you know, turn faster. And without that lab space and capacity, we're limited. We're more limited.
But this is a New Jersey Board of Education document.
Just PARC and state standards, yes.
Right, just intervene here. Going back probably five or six years ago, the state of New Jersey actually got involved in looking at new standards for science. That was after we started pushing a Common Core and that, that they felt that the science goals and objectives should be updated beneath the needs of today's environment. So, there was a gentleman from the State Department, Mr. Hines, who was a prominent science person who worked, and he did put together committees. At the time, Sayon County was actually one of the first counties to put together a science meeting, and I was on that originally. And it all started, I should say, it all stemmed from there. It all started from that point, and they were definitely looking for, to increase, again, to increase the rigor of science, make science more of a hands-on type of way of doing things for better understanding, so that it's not just memorizing formulas, but actually taking that information and creating new things. Look at engineering and so forth, law, rest of the country. So, that, this is the outcome of where that started, and I'm happy to have it, because I think it's something that's needed by Eric's design specialist.
When you were on that board, I'm not sure if I can... I guess five years ago, or somewhere around that, that's when they were starting, I guess, also to think about the PARC assessments.
A little bit, but this wasn't really driven by the PARC assessments, because, you know, Eric had it in his, exactly right, there was no, no big push by federal government or even, even local government for us to get involved in this. It was really more created by science people and seeing what the needs are.
No, I saw that by the listed corporation, and at Cisco, DuPont, and Boeing in there.
Yeah.
So, I, and I can understand why they would work that, they want the, they need the talent, and they're looking out of, out of country for talent.
So, um... That's the issue.
There's much more physical science in these standards, like physics and engineering. And the lab space, you know, I propose PARC and physical science.
I was just curious for why they're going more towards a push, and the PARC really is language and mathematics and not really any science, and I wonder why it's not.
Eventually, eventually, I think we might see, I mean, at the South, we do have end-of- end-of-force testing in some of these subject areas, so looking at history, looking at science. So, I think, once the dust settles from PARC, we'll start to see some of these other testing programs. And I kind of related to, you know, being somebody originally from New York City, taking the region's exams, and for every subject, which is a end-of-force region exam, and I think eventually, that's the intent of what we're looking at this time. We'll do end-of-force type testing, that'll, that'll be there all the time, this will be part of it, history will definitely be part of it, so I think you're gonna see more of that, be good to be on the cutting edge and be prepared for it.
I just also wanna say, New Jersey School Boards has done tons of seminars to bring board members up to speed on what STEM is, so you can always take a class in that and learn more and understand it better for yourselves.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment briefly. You know, kind of fits in with the New Jersey story, placing the United States in any way of engineering talent that needs coming. David Sion from RCA, Tel Aviv, um, the biotech industry here, to look at the number of PhDs and engineers. It's a big part of why incomes in New Jersey are high, that this state specifically provided engineers to the world. We're gonna continue to be premium in the state, we're gonna support engineering.
Okay, Arson. Thank you, Mr. Drew. Thank you, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you. B. Bars? If you don't mind, if you just have a little assistance over here. Yeah, because we're, this truck, we have to just transfer the...
Well, Mrs. Francisco gets her budget presentation ready. I'm just going to note that special reports and correspondence, we're gonna be doing the preliminary budget, and the following minutes are being presented for anticipated action at the regular meeting of March twenty-fourth, and they're listed there on your agenda. Legal report? And petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed for special action in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. But I'm thinking, since we do not, we haven't had the budget presentation yet, that's a little premature of me to even open that up unless there is somebody at this time that would like to talk about something else on the agenda.
Ada Eric, E.R.I.K., Councilwoman, West Milford, but I'm not here for that. I am here as the chair of the Cable TV Committee. Welcome to Channel seventy-seven. This is your kickoff. In, in preparing this channel, which is still up and learning, the Board of Ed meetings are proposed to run at eleven A. M. and eleven P. M., so far, every day. Because you have more meetings than the council does, yours will be changed weekly. Ours run two weeks and get changed because we have half as many as you. So, anything that the school is doing, any activities, such as the band being in the parade and stuff, that you wanna submit, right now, our CBB, or it's our Community Bulletin Board, is up and running, and you could just send that to us at WM seven seven TV at westmilford.org, and it'll be put up on the Community Bulletin Board. And anything else, when the wrestling happens, basketball games, let us know, and we'll let the community know. If you have anyone who wants to submit, as soon as our policy and procedures are in place, which is tomorrow night, and anything that's able to be aired on Channel thirteen, we will be able to air on seventy-seven. It'll go through a review, we have twenty-one-page document that's gonna be looked at tomorrow night, and we're hoping that the kids will get involved, because this is something that, you know, we'll send them out on shoots, but that's it.
Okay, so, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Question is, you just mentioned something that sparked some interest. Students being involved, so if we have students in the TV production class...
Yes.
And we wanted to give them extra credit assignments or something like that, we can reach out to you to see what kinds of taping they can do.
They can also come, we meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month at Town Hall, and it's seven thirty, it's the cable TV, everybody is welcome. We have it specifically in policy and procedures, anyone who wants to work will be welcomed on the committee. So, if they wanna, wanna learn to shoot, they wanna, you know, we will be purchasing a camera. That, that camera is Cable Vision's camera, so that's an Arcaic camera. So, one thing we will be asking from your, the techno-beaks here, is what, you know, connections we need.
We would need to make that.
So that when we get the new camera, it fits here also. And my two cameramen here, these are just two of our cameramen, they'll find a place where it's comfortable to get it. Get the camera off me.
All right.
I'm actually behind it, not in front of it. Okay.
Good, so that's, that's very interesting, because I'm thinking of, we have students that do take it upon themselves to do some work like that. We did a little tour again yesterday, Mr. Drew, myself, and Ms. Francisco, and Mr. Hesler, around the high school, and one of the places we stopped was the TV studio. So, my thinking is that with the equipment we have, we can probably do our own editing here, based on what we record, and then send you the finished product, and that, I think will be...
Yes, the one thing that, we have a rule, it cannot be edited, is this meeting...
Right.
And council meetings.
Okay, yeah, anything legal, right.
Everything else, you can do basically what you want.
Okay, the last question I have is, you said about using the Community Bulletin Board?
Yes.
So, right now, we're, we have a drive to the drive, but we're trying to recruit kindergarten students, and it's slow, but it's gotten much better. So, if we wanted to put something on that Community Bulletin Board for people to see at home, to realize that this is the deadline to, you know, have your student, that's great, but that's good to know. All right, thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to roll through the presentation?
I don't wanna...
The President or I got it, we're away for the, have a question?
I think we're just about ready.
Yes, okay.
So, we want to close petitions, requests, go back to what we talked about?
We'll be open, and we'll come back to it.
Right. All right, so we close, and we're... We'll leave it open, and then we'll come back to it, and as far as the President's report, I have nothing to report at this time. Okay. Are we ready to do the budget presentation? Okay, so we move on to the preliminary budget.
Okay, so, those of you who don't know me, I'm Mr. Rashika, the interim superintendent for West Milford Schools. We are going to take a look at the preliminary budget, and encompasses academic programs, facilities, and many other aspects of what we need to do when we build the budget for the school system. As you know, this is a large school system, we have approximately thirty-four hundred students here, eight schools, nine schools, counting the Highlander Academy, and so there is quite a bit of work that needs to happen. But I'm gonna focus my first few slides on the academic programs and kind of pick up a little bit more from where Eric was before, too. First of all, looking at the district goals are kind of what drives what our budget's going to be, based on the direction we wanna go on. Now, the other piece of this, too, is always student needs. We have to take a good look at student performance, what's going on in the classroom, what's going on in the school and the district as a whole. So, if we look at the, the goals that were put together back probably in September, we have physical and safe, emotionally secure environment, we want students and staff to feel very comfortable coming in, as well as the public. When somebody visits, we want them to have a good feeling about being inside one of the schools. Student achievement for every district is top priority, and to increase the positive attitude in the area of math. Math is becoming a little bit more challenging based on the Common Core and the way they have to do problems, so it takes a lot more work and concentration, and also heighten student engagement and learning through increased attendance. And we saw a little bit of this in a high school presentation. So, there are many policies that drive where we're going. So, we take a look here, the first thing I would like to make everybody aware of is the new course offerings that have happened this year and going into next year. As you can see, if we look down the left column, history, seventh grade, liberty, equality, History, Seventh Grade, Liberty, Equality, and Power. That basically is, I'm just going to give you a little background of that, the new course, which offers students the opportunity to do some research and also to get involved in writing and also public speaking. It's a piece that we feel that they're going to need when we get into looking at the new way of doing business in schools. Presentations are a big part of what's happening. In math, we've included in grades eleven through twelve, Intro to Statistics and Probabilities. If we look at the science courses we were talking about before, statistics are strongly attached to that. In science, we again talk about STEM-based programs. We are looking at a robotics program that will take place at the high school, and we will be using Lego-type materials for those, and then build upon that. The robotics, again, every place we look, if you look at a plant that's building new cars, it's all robotics. You go to a store, many of the things that you're doing there are also based on robotics. Eighth grade, we look at world languages, and we see that we have AP Italian in the high school, I should say, that's world language in the advanced placement class at the high school level. And then in eighth grade, we're starting to offer for next year, full year courses in German, Italian, Spanish, and French. This is not a watered-down program. There are programs that are online. There's a program called Muzzy, which certain, a lot of schools use within the state. We are doing this with a classroom teacher who will actually be teaching the course for a full year with the students. So it's an excellent opportunity for them to have a, an extra year of world language experience before they even reach the high school. The American Sign Language for college credit, that's going to be an after-school program. We have many students that are involved in learning how to sign. They will pay the money for a professor that will come from the Sayay County Community College. If they pass the class, which I'm sure they will, if you're that invested, they will actually seem to college credit for that. Now, you also have to keep in mind that we already have some courses with the high school where students are able to go to Fairleigh Dickinson University, off-campus, on-campus. We also have a program that's aligned with Seton Hall University. So as you can see, the more time that goes on, the more we're trying to invent the college experience at the high school level, to really get them prepared. English literacy and sci- for science and fiction and fantasy, that's another course in English. Memoir biography, the fragmented, broken story, postmodern literature, composition for college public speaking, doppelgangers, dreams and madness is sort of a Gothic type of English, some of those dark stories. But again, these are classes specifically, those are specifically for seniors who are looking to have some more experience in staying involved in the English program. Elementary ongoing support programs to increase learning and academic achievement. We have seen over and over again, a number of elementary principals coming to us, presenting all these different programs that they do for students, in addition to the actual classroom. We want to increase those types of programs and also bring in new strategies and methods to, to the classroom. None of it is free, you know, they're trying to build us in the right way to make this happen. Special education, multiple programs that support children from preschool to high school level, and I'll get into that a little bit later on. But again, we have to look at the entire student population. It's not all about high school, it's about preschool through twelfth grade. So that's a pretty good picture of where, where we're headed. We take a look at advanced placements. Many high schools throughout the state, throughout the country, are not only based, or their scores are not only based on what's happening in the school and the scores that the students get, they also want to know how many advanced placement courses are available to students. We have added a few more, so if you look there, we have them in English, mathematics, science, history, social science, art, world language, and eventually I'd like to see there's at least one or two AP music classes that I would like to see added to the board. But we are very proud to have a total of twenty-one AP courses. That's outstanding, so, yes.
Do you know what they are? What are the English courses?
Uh, there's English composition, and something in literacy. I don't have my booklet with me, but in math, it's computer science, statistics, and what's that?
AP Calc?
Calculus, AP Calc, right. Science, environmental science, AP Bio, AP Physics, AP Chemistry, AP Environmental Science. Okay, and then history, it's American history, so on, they have several electives there. In art, it's studio art, there's two, studio art and I believe one in art history. And in world languages, each one of the languages has an AP course attached to it.
The physics, chemistry, biology, those, A, B, C, you know?
Oh, no, it's just AP Bio, it's AP Chem.
All right.
And it is AP Physics, C.
Calculus.
That has a, that's A.
Calculus.
You'll see.
Um, A, B, and there's two of them.
I messaged through my cable chief.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you very much.
And I, we could actually send that information out, no problem. So the focus for the future, looking ahead. Now, remember, the goal right now is we're, we have a preliminary budget that is going to make it possible to keep these programs in place. We, all of us, I think, really don't want to see anything academically disappear from what we've been offering. It took a long time to get to this level. I've only been here a few months, but looking back at the history, I can see that there's been a tremendous amount of growth in the course offerings and the way that Westmofford is doing business in the schools. That's positive. So sustainability of current programs at all levels, including instructional programs, school culture, we talk about character education, and student support, going back to those elementary programs. I am a strong supporter of school and student support. You have to give students, especially in today's environment, with all the challenges that they have, coming from home, just going through daily life, very fast-paced world, you have to give them every opportunity and every piece of support that you can possibly give them. You can't give up. In district for special education students, we're looking to include a preschool autistic program that will begin there. Dr. Barudin and Dr. Quaid have looked at that to increase the number of students that would be able to stay in district. So, the hope is that once we start with these students at the preschool level, then they will move into the elementary schools, and work their way up to the high school, and of course, the Highlander Academy, looking at that. We want to build upon that program. And when I say build upon that program, I don't mean necessarily send more students there from our own school, but I'm looking at the types of programs that are available for these students. Are there some things where they can get out, and we talked a little bit about SLE, which is where students go out and look at types of jobs and careers that they can have, look at that a little bit. And I think Dr. Barudin and myself, looking in the future, would like to look at the possibility of bringing in more students from other, other districts as tuition-paying students. Is there a cost involved in these things? Yes. But, we're also going to see a turnaround in that, because you implement these programs, you hire a few teachers to run the program, especially for the autistic program, but you're keeping students back in the district. So if we're spending sixty thousand dollars each for two students to go back out to another school because we don't have the program, and we bring them back in, there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars savings. Again, eventually, once we know that we're secure in running this program, we can reach out to other districts to have them then join us as tuition-paying students. So we're looking for that to happen. And last but not least, there the augment the character education program from the building level. We all know, we're very happy. We have two schools that recognize the schools of character for the state of New Jersey. But the goal here, too, is we want to look at this go out to the community. We want to be a district known for character education. Sometimes we say we have lots of characters, but we want to have positive characters, that's what we're looking for. Bring them out to the community, have them be involved in other programs through the community, whether it's working with our people here with Channel seventy-seven, whether it's working with senior citizens, young children, whatever the case may be. So we're looking at special needs, we're looking at sustainability, looking at character education, and just overall building a better support environment for all and all students.
I'm going to hold off on my questions. Tony, it's at the end.
Yeah, they're fine, get them. Science, technology, engineering, mathematics, that's what STEM is, to focus on that, those areas. My intention, and I think Eric will back me up on this, we're going to work together, to look at building relationships with local colleges. I have gathered some information already. There are some weekend programs for high school students that I'd like to see take place. Kane University offers some programs. I've been in touch with Ramapo College to run some programs as well. So the reason why we want to see STEM built is some of the topics we spoke about before. It's important for students to have this opportunity to have a true understanding of science and where and how you can use it. If you look at this, it almost seems like we're forgetting about the student who wants to be, wants to go and become a plumber, become an electrician, work in some other area. Well, the truth of the matter is, the best plumbers, best electricians, all have some kind of a background in science, so they know what they're doing. You have to look at, if you're going to be heating a pipe, there's a certain temperature that you can heat that to, until the pipe holds up, you know? You want to make sure that happens. Working with electricity, engineering is a big piece of this. You have to know what's going to put that all together. So this truly, you know, it sounds elitist, but it's not. It's a good experience for all the students to have. Develop various programs to support this area after school and on weekends. Again, we can go out to universities, and we can have colleges come here, and it's not only about robotics. We spoke about robotics a little bit before, but this is just the whole big piece. The whole big piece with science, technology, bring in engineers, bring in design teams to help you design different things, and what the process will be in developing what you're trying to do. Again, as I said before, it's not just about memorizing formulas. In-school programs for elementary schools. We want to see this happen. So how do you do that? Well, first of all, there are some programs that can come into the elementary school and do assembly programs and work with students even on the weekends. My intent and hope is that eventually at Westmofford Schools, our students at the high school level can take those programs down to the elementary level and share their experience with them there. So I think that would be very, very helpful. So, you know, these are the things we're looking at. It's a budget that's developed to, again, sustain what we have and to move forward. It's a very, very challenging world out there. We have students, you know, in college who are preparing for jobs, you read this many times, preparing for jobs that exist today, but may, may not be here tomorrow, because that's how far we're going with technology. So the, the technology is a big aspect of this, and Barbara will talk some more about that piece. But, so STEM is a big piece of what we're looking to do. Questions?
On this, or everything, because I have a bunch of questions from behind, so I just figured I'd wait till the end.
All right, because what I, I just wanted to add, too, is when we look at the, the labs that we're talking about, the chemistry programs, and helping along with this, they're, I think they're the original labs from nineteen seventeen, something that school has built here. So if we look, Mr. Drew was with us yesterday, as I said before, we took a look in there, some of the cabinets are just, they're just not safe. A lot of the equipment is antiquated. We have emergency showers, God forbid somebody gets covered in chemicals, that have no drain on the floor whatsoever. So you would have to run a shower that's running on top of the leadoleum, kental floor, whatever's down there. The water would just be dispersed all over the classroom. So they're, they're rinsing a student off, now creating another hazard, because now you're going to have a class of twenty-five students slipping all over a wet floor.
Maybe Mr. Seeger can answer this, and maybe just make me think of something. Are there hazardous materials that, you know, if they need a shower?
Well, sometimes, yes. You know, if you're in chemistry-
And then, and then the next question is, what are we doing, putting those down a drain? Does it go to a separate tank?
The disposal of-
Because you've got hazmat, you've got hazardous materials.
Disposal, disposal of those types of chemicals. First of all, we have to store them the right way. There's a separate closet that we use for storage. And when you are going to remove those, there are companies that come in and take them out the right way.
No, I, I understood, but if, if a child gets something on him, and he's going to shower himself-
Well, I guess-
-and it's going to go down through a floor drain, you're putting hazardous materials-
We don't deal with stuff that's that dangerous. It's, it's, it's just like a completely acid, but God forbid it happens, happens by code, we have the shower there.
Okay.
The concentrated stuff is kept away from the student.
Okay, all right. Just raised the, you know, I, I've worked in a, in a lab shortly, after I got done with college, a research facility, and it was, that was one of the things I had to deal with, because it was hazardous race. And it's very strict guidelines. So that's where, when you said shower off, something that's, you know, hazardous, just, you know?
This is true.
Alarms went off.
But, you know, the fact of, we won't have to worry about it right now, because there aren't any drains, we're just kind of laying some on the floor. But there is, you know, seriously, there are a number of things that we will need to be upgrading in those areas, even when you're working with chemicals, to have a safe environment to work with the chemicals. So it's not, it goes beyond just wearing goggles and those kinds of things. So that's, that's what we do.
There is no eye wash someplace in there, is there?
There's eye wash in every classroom.
There is, okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, a little bit more about what Mr. Rashika was talking about. Every year when we start developing the budget in November, we talk about what are the parameters, some of the things that we'd like to see addressed in the next budget cycle. So what we would always like to do, and, and as Mr. Rashika said, we want to maintain really good programs that we've started to put into place. Some of the things that we started, this is the second year, we have a preschool intervention inclusion program for our, our, our students, and we have two sites. We have one at UGL School, and one at Maple Road School. And for September, I found that the Jan Ed portion has already been filled, and we have a wait list for students that want to come into that program. And that's for three and four-year-olds. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we, we have established that program. It's been successful, and we want to be able to continue it. And the current budget, that's, that's how we, we prepare the budget. We want to support things that are successful. A few years ago, we implemented the full-day kindergarten program, and that's been successful. We have shared social workers in each of our elementary schools. We started with a half teachers that were shared among two schools, and then we went to a full-time teacher that's shared among two schools. And that social worker has been so successful, every year we get requests to have a full-time social worker in each of those buildings. Right now, we've been keeping that at bay. That may be a come, come time where we're going to have to actually consider it. But the, the proposed budget maintains the three social workers. Now, these individuals also help with the HIV investigation, so they've become an essential part of the, of the school plan. We have, we, a few years ago, we added a, a six phys ed teacher for the elementary schools. So we had shared phys ed, five teachers for six buildings. And we decided that we were going to enhance the project adventure program and the character ed programs at the elementary school, in order to try to work through the HIV issues that we were experiencing. So we added a six physical education teacher, and I think that that's done a lot to assist in minimizing the number of HIV incidents that you are now getting, you know, have to review at, at each board meeting. We also added a full-time media specialist at MacArthur School. MacArthur School had a shared media specialist. And with the importance of, of the media specialists and, and the teachings, and the programs that they bring to the students, it's essential that MacArthur, of all places, which is kind of like the sandwich, like the little bit in the middle, they really needed to have someone that was going to be able to support the things that began in the elementary school in preparation for the high school. And that's been very successful. The, the person that was born into MacArthur School has been able to, to, Iris, would you like to add some of the things that she's been able to do at MacArthur?
Um, I think one of the biggest benefits is for, for our media specialists across the district is that they have become the technology literacy experts. So they can capitalize on helping teachers to best know how to use technology, and having students learn how to use technology to improve learning overall, and having people in the building who can help facilitate that, to bring classes in. We now have portfolio assessments that are being developed at grade seven through twelve, so students can catalog electronically their schoolwork to be able to share that with their teachers in the next area over to ninth grade, or to college or career after MacArthur High School. So all of that kind of feedback is given back to the students and to, to the teachers to be able to maximize this function.
Um, a few years ago, the board was very supportive in equalizing the leveled libraries in the elementary schools. Some schools were more successful in getting donations of the leveled libraries at other school buildings. So we were able to equalize everything- So, we were able to equalize everything. And then last year, um, Language Arts and Science got together and they started with the nonfiction, um, uh, books into the elementary schools. So, we'd like to continue to be able to bring those to the, to the classroom so the students have that information available to them right there at their hand, hands on. Um, as Mr. Rashika said, we have a significant number of AP classes and we'd like to continue building on that inventory. And so, one of the things we're looking to do is support the, the teachers that are gonna be teaching the AP programs because they have, actually need to have special training in order for the AP course to come. So, those are some of the initiatives that we've established and we'd like to continue. Um, readers' writing workshop. Iris, would you like to talk about that? Because that's been really successful.
For, um, those of you who've been around before, we've heard that, um, we can train people on reading writing workshop, which is really a premier model, as it goes, in many high functioning, um, school districts. And we've been using it for, I think this is our fourth year. Um, we did a leveled approach to be able to bring it in a way that was, allowed children to grow into, into the process and have our teachers be a lot more effective. And now we have completely covered all the training that we need. And now we have a really wonderful model, um, of having our teachers work with our supervisor, Mrs. West, as part of the balanced literacy team. Uh, they meet on occasion to, uh, think, to work together about how to best reach students in the reading writing workshop model. And they're also taking on responsibility to do some training for new teachers to help them to get up to speed. Because we have our department of teachers who miss initial training. Uh, we're able to complete that all in-house now. We do have, um, teachers who request to go to Columbia University Teachers College. And I think some of you will remember that we do provide a bus to take our teachers to that free event on a Saturday. Uh, I think we had two buses last year and two buses that our teachers who don't teach are getting in this year. Um, it's a self-sustaining model at this point. Um, and there are, there are always ways to learn more about it. And our teachers are certainly capable of that.
Um, you've, you've heard a lot about the, um, the TeachGave program that we've implemented over the last couple of years and the, the requirements of teacher evaluation. And Iris can speak to that too because, um, we're trying to work on continuing to target the teachers' capabilities.
Um, that is, that was a charge from, um, Achieve NJ. And TeachGave is the system and the rubric that we use for the evaluation of teachers and specialists. The specialists will be not classroom teachers, uh, media specialists, nurses, child support team members, et cetera. Um, at this point, all of our administrators have been trained and all of our teachers have been trained, whether they're new or they've been around for a while. And the way that we can maintain this without having a cost to the district is that now we have systems in place so that we can self-regulate our efficacy in the use of the program as well as finding integrated reliability and, uh, integrity and interpreting, um, all the systems that we're using. TeachGave really houses the information from teachers. Uh, we found it to be an effective way to obtain the information and be able to run reports on that. So, we can see what areas we're in need. And when we did that on our first year, we found that there were a few areas, um, generically that we need to work on. And as of running report just recently, those are well shown improvements. So, the commitment that people have made to making this a system that works well and that is able to be formed and practicing a positive way has been a great thing.
So, one thing that we've learned is that we never can say, gee, we put that in place and now we don't have to worry about it anymore. Because you need to continually assess the programs that we put in and the things that we do. Uh, in the process of assessing our technology needs, um, everybody's still asking about the one-to-one, for your own, the, um, environment that, that they're hoping that eventually we're gonna get to. And so, um, we have, in the last two years, uh, implemented a number, brought a number of iPads and Chromebooks into the classroom. We have Chromebook carts for every building and we'd like to build on that inventory. Um, we also, uh, what we're doing is looking at all of our textbooks. And we've done, we've made remarkable progress in, in, uh, buying new textbooks that have an online component. They have online licensing to go with it. So, uh, we're in the process of still looking at those textbooks and we have some textbook requests. Um, in order to align those books that we gave for, um, for set standards. And we're also continuing to address a lot of the capital projects. Uh, we've done some, um, some big projects in the last couple of years. We've, um, started monitoring for the remediation at the transportation depot. We've, um, replaced the roof at Marshall Hill School. We've replaced the boiler at the high school. And now have a, an independent, um, water heater so that we don't have to run the boilers in the summertime. Um, we, um, have done some, some paving and a lot of concrete sidewalks at some of our schools in order to, um, make them safer areas for the, um, the students and staff. So, we continue in this budget to address a lot of our capital project needs because there are a lot of, uh, facility needs that we have. Um, we do have, um.
Barbara? And on the, on that page, you're talking about a little, you're talking around, you have thousands of employees. But I know that if you get D-bots from that, like you probably get an E-bot version of E-bot on your cell phone. But one, it costs less. And two, you can now check it out onto a PC in a classroom or whatever at any of your schools. You don't have to have a copy in every single school. And I, I, I'm not being critical on this, it's.
We do have the online component.
Okay.
We do have the online component, but we're finding that a lot of students still prefer to have the, uh, the book and game.
Oh, there are many times where the.
And, and what we've done is, we've bought classroom sets that the students can use in the buildings, but they have the licensing that they can use at home. So, that's what we've done in a lot of situations. But, um, a lot of the students, especially the older students, are still looking for that physical book. Um, yes, we have had decreasing enrollment. Um, as you can see, um, just at the high school, it's about, about three hundred students less than there was ten years ago. Um, but I think you also need to recognize that the way we deliver education is a lot different than it was ten years ago. And we have a lot more specialized, um, classrooms and, um, the, the, the class sizes are a lot smaller in order that we can't see money in front of them. So, this is what our projected enrollment is for next year, just, um, a touch under thirty-six hundred. Um, and so, we'll see where it goes. Um, General Fund Revenue, everybody's always interested in where the money's coming from. Our state aid has been flat, uh, for probably the last three years. And I read an article not too long ago that said that when the governor says that he's put more money into, you know, education than any government before him, we actually are behind the eight ball because he hasn't increased, um, state aid even to, to meet the rate inflation. So, our state aid once again is flat. Extraordinary aid is a, a amount that we budget every year and it helps support our special education program. Um, the application is done in the winter. Um, most likely March, April. I think they've changed, they've changed the, um, the application process last year. So, we per, we'll, we'll be doing the, um, application probably in March or April, at March, April. And then, um, we won't know if we get awarded the money until June. So, we budget the money now. We do the application in eight months. And then we find out at the end of the school year whether or not we got the money that we already spent. That's the way the state works. But, we've been successful, um, over the last couple of years. Um, we, we basically get maybe a little bit more, about thirty or forty thousand dollars more than what we, we budget. So, we, we've been fortunate. Um, when I first came here a few years ago, there was actually nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in the extraordinary aid revenue area. And, um, if we, if we did that now and spent out a budget, we would've been about two hundred and so down a dollar from the, behind the eight ball. Um, fund balance. Uh, the fund balance number that is up there is, um, a budgeted surplus number. If you look at current school year fourteen fifteen, the two million, three hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and forty was money that was in excess in a prior year's audit. The current year, the twenty thirteen fourteen audit that was presented in December actually had a, um, a surplus of two million, six thousand, two hundred. You can see up there that I'm anticipating we're gonna have excess surplus. And I'm putting two thousand, five hundred, two million, five hundred thousand dollars, which is actually more than what we had in excess surplus. So, I'm adding another four hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred dollars in order to support the fifteen sixteen budget. Yeah.
Where'd that come from?
The two million, six hundred thousand.
The, the extra four hundred thousand.
The extra four hundred thousand is anticipated surplus out of this budget. The current year's budget.
They're worrying right now.
Right. And if that doesn't materialize, it'll come from the two percent that we have since then. The two percent that the state allows us to keep.
So, is the two point five, is that the amount from the excess surplus at the beginning of the year or the end of the year?
Two point five, two, two million, six hundred thousand, two hundred. Two million, six hundred thousand, two hundred. Two million, six thousand, two hundred.
Six thousand, two hundred.
Two mil, two zero zero six, two zero zero was our audited excess surplus.
On June thirtieth of twenty fourteen?
On June, yes.
You're saying two point five on June thirtieth is over twenty fifteen?
Well, we already have the two million. So, it's just a difference of four hundred ninety-three, eight hundred. So, I'm anticipating that we will have four hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred additional surplus out of this year's budget.
At the start of the year and now.
As of June thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen.
As of June thirtieth, twenty fifteen.
The budget we're doing is for the fifteen sixteen.
Yes, yes.
What do we think is gonna be an excess surplus on June thirtieth, twenty sixteen?
We don't know. At this point, I'm anticipating that we will have at least four hundred and ninety-three thousand. So.
At the end of this year.
At the end of this year, which will, which will supplement next year's budget.
This year, but we're budgeting for the next year. Barbara, uh, uh, this is where I'm a little, are you gonna transfer that into next year's budget?
Yeah.
Because the money, the two million, sixty-two hundred dollars was from last year's budget.
Right.
It goes, it jumps a year, it skips a year.
But when, when, when they do the audit calculation, if the, the two million, six thousand dollars is actually a reserved amount of money. So, it's just still sitting in our surplus. And when they do the audit calculation, it's gonna drop out. This is basically reserved for next year's budget, for fifteen sixteen budget. So, when they calculate all the excess surplus, this additional four hundred thousand dollars is going to be part of that calculation. And it's just gonna go into support of the fifteen sixteen budget. It's in the management report. If you look at the calculations that go in the management report in the audit, it'll show you how they calculate, calculate out the excess surplus. So, it'll say, um, reserve, um, thirteen fourteen school year, we have two million, six thousand, two hundred. Additional surplus. And now we have four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six thousand. And so, that'll all come off of the surplus that's remaining as of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Mm-hmm. Right. Okay, um, Medicaid reimbursement, that's a number that we get from the state of New Jersey that we, that's a, a number we have to achieve. Um, we apply, um, on a monthly basis for services that we render in order to get reimbursed. And that, uh, helps secure our budget. Um, we're anticipating two hun, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred in tuition. Um, that could be homeless. It could be, um, we bring some students into our MD and BD programs. So, that's what we're anticipating the tuition. Our miscellaneous revenues increased a little bit. Um, it's rentals because our, our facilities get rented. Um, and it's other things that come along that, you know, we manage to, uh, get money for. So, um.
So, that's where the tax debt, anything else?
No. But, it's miscellaneous revenues. We have, uh, some agreements with, um, other districts to provide transportation. Um, um, we, we take care of their, their costs and things like that. So, we have, um, miscellaneous revenue. Uh, we're, we have capital reserves.
I'm sorry, I'm not listening, I'm just trying to think. The, um, tuition reimbursement, that would not include the program that Mr. Borudin recommended we bring back either listening or being saved. Some tuition.
No, this is, the tuitions that we get in.
So, we should be better than that.
The, the mon, Mr. Bor, Dr. Borudin has recommended the autistic program.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
And for the tuitions that we're paying out, that money will be reallocated to pay for the staff members that we need to run the program.
Except I really thought we were gonna make, we were gonna wind up ahead.
Well, this tuition is actually for students that are from other school districts that come to our school. And we, and we pay, they pay us. That's what that tuition is for. There are students that come here that we educate because we have these special programs. And, uh, Mr. Rashika talked a little bit about Highlander Academy and that we're hoping that it'd be able to expand it to a tuition where we can bring tuition students in. That, that tuition would also be included there. This is a revenue. It's not an expenditure. Um, we have a withdrawal from capital reserve. We have a capital reserve account. And, um, that eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars represents our cost for the boiler replacements that were in the fifteen sixteen budget for Paradise North School and Westwood School. So, that's our portion, which is sixty percent of the total cost. The other forty percent of the cost is being funded by the state of New Jersey.
Can we look at any other boiler replacements, any of the other screens in the future?
Well, from what I understand, they're all in, they're all been replaced. These are the last three that need to be replaced. We've been having some issues with Macbin School. But, um, I believe it's just a, um, some kind of a heat exchanger that needs to be done.
Well, not the stadium.
They're paying from.
And I, and I, and I could be wrong. Didn't they take a couple of boilers from Macbin?
And bring them to Marshall Hill.
And bring them to Marshall Hill?
Yeah.
So, we're running at a deficit there. And that's taxing what we have. So, that's gonna.
Like, uh, from what I understand, we need a heat exchanger at Macbin School and we're looking into purchasing that now. And that's gonna handle the problem that we have at Macbin School. So, when we did the raw grants a couple of years ago, we looked at the, um, boilers that hadn't been replaced in the three schools, the high school and Paradise North and Westwood schools, the three schools that were materialized. So, that's what we're doing with those. Those are boiler replacements using raw jet money. Um, a few years ago, we established a maintenance reserve account and we're tapping into that for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to support this year's budget. And that supports our required maintenance effort. We have a maintenance effort that we require to do every year. We have to spend so much money. Um, ten percent of the building cost, the building cost we have to spend is required maintenance. Um, and that come up again and after. But, um, so, and then our tax order. Um, the fifty-four.
That required maintenance part of that five-year maintenance plan?
No.
No.
No. Um, it could only be used though for required maintenance, I understand.
I, I.
Because you have, you have general maintenance, you have required maintenance.
And that five-year plan is the general maintenance. Do we have to submit?
No, that's a long-range facility plan. That would be like capital, capital improvements. The comprehensive maintenance plan that we do every fall supports the maintenance reserve.
Maintenance reserve, okay.
So, um, in the current school year, we had a fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven. So, um, in the current school year, we had a fifty-three million, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollar tax levy. This budget is proposing a two percent decrease in the tax levy, which will bring it to fifty-four million, one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and one hundred and four dollars. And that basically shows you what our current expense, um, would be, seventy-three million, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. This is how it's divvied up in supporting all of our, our programs, federal education, special ed, encore bilingual student support, which includes BIDAS and, um, child seventeen, um, appropriate class, a transportation cost, operations maintenance initiatives. So, that's basically how that seventy-three million dollars is split up programmatically. You can see that we're adding quite a bit of money to the capital outlay because we're really trying to get these facilities left out of that. That's.
And when I go back a few pages on new course offerings, we have under that elementary ongoing support pro- programs to increase learning and academic achievement. And I look at student support here and I see it's cut by a million dollars. So.
Mm-hmm. I wouldn't say that it's cut. You have to remember that we put a lot of staff members.
And what would you call it? I mean, to me, I look at that, it looks like it's been cut.
I'm trying to explain it.
Yeah.
You realize eighty percent of your budget just about is salary benefits.
Yes.
We've had a significant number of retirements in the last year. So, if you have a significant number of high, um, age staff members leaving, you have breakage. The breakage translates into a lower dollar per week. Doesn't mean that you've cut personnel, it means that the personnel is costing you less money. And you're reallocating that money to someplace else that you might need. So, we haven't made any cuts in student support services. It's just that it's costing us less money.
I, I, if we're going through the budget, but, um, and in particular, we're looking at, at our healthcare costs, um, I see that you're expecting those to increase pretty significantly next year, a little over ten percent. Um, which equates to a million dollars that we've got in, um, and then looking at what we spent this year in healthcare costs, and we spent so far today borrowing next week's middle list, we spent seven point two million on healthcare. And if we look at the numbers, that's gonna equate to, we're gonna spend another three point six, which will be up to ten point eight million dollars. We've got ten point three in our line item. So, um, there's, we're gonna have to come up with somewhere out of the budget, a half million dollars to cover those expenses.
Um, remember that, um, we'll be entering phase four of employee benefit contribution.
Next year, right?
For next year.
Yes.
So, that's why, this, and, and that money, that account is offset by the amount of employee benefit contributions that we get. So, you'll see that there is actua- it's, it's actually, um, if we weren't, if we didn't receive those employee benefit contributions, there probably, I think there was about sixteen or eighteen, one point eight, one point six or one point eight million dollars in that, um, offset plus employee benefit. So.
So, you're, are you anticipating, anticipating a surplus of this year's current, ten point three that we have in that line item?
It's a possibility. It's a possibility. It depends. Um, we've been experiencing more people are, um, taking a waiver. But you never know what kind of life events people have because somebody might have a waiver today and then tomorrow they might use a benefit. So, it's, every month it changes.
From the first budget that Mr. Pines tied us back in February, from what you've given us from mail yesterday, um, I see that there's significant cuts to be made, um, to the tune, I, I, I didn't add it all up, but I'm gonna say it because it's a million, it's, it's over there, um. And how come it hasn't equated into a, a cut? We're gonna ask the taxpayer this to come up with.
If you, what we received initially
Yes.
were the requests that we received from the principals of the supervisors. And, um, basically, they have, they just say, this is what I need, this is what I want. And then, once we listen to all of that and we put it together in your first draft of the budget document, we have to go back, once we know how much money we're working with, and we have to say, okay, priorities, tell me what you really want, tell, tell me what's, I usually tell them, I want you three priority. One is absolutely what you need to have, two is it would be really good if I have it, that is my wish. So, the draft that you received yesterday was actually supporting the revenues that we have here. Now, realize, you just said that we were gonna have a million dollar increase in employee benefits.
And that's what you projected.
Right. And so, that pretty much takes your two percent tax levy cap, because your cap, tax levy cap is a million, six hundred thousand. Um, you also have other general costs that continue to go up. Um, gasoline goes up and down because it will go up and down, um, grammar and, and estate, um, go off that, that adjusts as the prices adjust, but.
Do we pay taxes on that?
Do we pay taxes?
State taxes on the fuel, are we exempt from that?
I don't know that we're exempt from that because that's federal, I think there are federal.
Well, there's federal and there's state tax. I know we're probably not exempt from the federal.
I don't know, I don't, I think we're exempt from sales tax, no, I think.
The state sales tax, yeah.
But that's not, I don't think that's what's on the benefit desk.
I, I also sort of.
Sales tax.
What's that?
We're only exempt from the sales.
It's the sales tax, that's what I thought.
We're only exempt from sales tax, right. I don't think that's what's on the desk.
Okay. Okay. Um.
I mean, you have increment costs that, you know, because you're, and you're going into teachers' negotiations. So, there's a lot of things that go into a budget which are gonna increase your budget.
Yeah, and, and, uh, fuel is, is one of the things that I, I wanted to ask, because you're still not in there. You're paying three fifty for diesel, three and a quarter for gasoline. Um, and you've increased that from last year, that, that line item is increased from last year. We're definitely gonna have a, a surplus in this year's because our costs, it basically almost got cut in half from, from the high of, of the beginning of the year. If all of this gas was like three fifty a gallon.
Three five, three months.
For, for, yeah, from gas, you know.
It went down three months.
Yep, it went down significantly in three months. But we're s- we've increased that line item, um.
For next year's budget.
For next year's budget.
I don't know what's gonna happen between now and June of twenty sixteen. That's the problem. That's the problem. Look at how much it's gone up in the last three weeks. Gasoline.
And it's starting to go back down again.
Well, it went down two cents, you know, when I buy my local gas. It went down two cents. But, a, a year ago, or six months ago, it was four dollars a gallon. I was paying over four dollars a gallon.
Yeah, no, I, I, I paid it too.
And now it's two dollars and sixty. But, I don't know where it's gonna be in June of twenty sixteen because what happens if he finally gets smart and decides he's gotta raise money for the transportation fund and the only place he can get it is from gasoline?
Mm-hmm.
New Jersey is the cheapest in gasoline costs because of the lack of taxes. So, I don't know what's gonna happen in June of twenty sixteen and where we're gonna be with the budget. And, and that's what always becomes so problematic because you're trying to project out for eighteen months and when the things that you're projecting don't materialize, you end up with per- a, a fun balance. You end up with surplus. And you also have to recognize the fact that we have revenues. And if we don't get the revenues that we're anticipating, we spend that all our budget, we're in a deficit and that's against the law. So, it's a very delicate balance trying to figure out how much money you're gonna really need and how much you're gonna really spend. And that's another reason why I get to a point in the school budget year and I say, okay, if you haven't bought it, you don't need it and now you can't have any more money.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't wanna be in a situation where May comes and I realize, guess what? The governor didn't put extraordinary aid into the budget and now we're gonna be storing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in my records. And now what am I gonna do? Because he could do that. Every year, he determines, we find out, right, Dr. Burden? In June, whether or not that money is gonna be there to fund the year that we just passed. So, if we cut beat for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd be in big trouble. That's a lot of money. So, that's a really delicate balance.
And, and, um, natural gas, we have, uh, I don't know, four hundred and a four seventy-six for this year, uh, four eighty-eight for what they're, they're considering next year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we spent three oh nine last year. Um, I haven't seen a board secretary's report, so I don't know what we spent so far. I guess we'll see that next month, but, um, or next week, I don't know. But, if I, if, if I look at the trend here, um, it looks like we've got a considerable amount of money in both of those lines, and I'm gonna guess that we're gonna have somewhere around a hundred and twenty-five thousand as a surplus because again, natural gas rates have come down as well.
Right, and, and we're part of the consortium, yes, and we have that with ACs.
And, and we, and we do that with ACs, and we do that with ACs. So.
But now, what happens when they have to go out to bid again?
Aren't they going out to bid, or electric is going out right about now?
Electric is going to exit.
Doesn't gas follow like two months later?
No, every, the contract is different. I, I believe that the gas contract is a cheaper contract, so it will, it's gonna be cheaper.
So, so, uh, last year's prices would be good in this year's. So, we're, then we're definitely gonna have maybe, maybe in, in two thousand and sixteen when it goes out to bid. But, and again, I, I see, going through the board secretary's report, line item after line item, we have surplus and we transfer money out with. And I just, for the life of me, I can't support a, a two percent increase in the budget. And when I, I look at our legal costs, we're going into, uh.
Can I get through the rest of the presentation?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Yes, Mr. Burden.
Um, we're getting close to nine o'clock, Madam President, so I would like to, uh, make a motion to go into executive session at nine twenty, nine thirty? All right, nine thirty P M.
Second.
Full favor, um, any opposed? Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Okay. Okay, some of the new initiatives and, and Mr. Resika talked about these, um, about these, these comments and, uh, and, uh, um, we love the, the autistic program, but we, we get two, um, for two. And as I said earlier, that is money that is gonna be reallocated. If that comes to tuition, monies that we have set aside for tuitions for these students will be reallocated to pay for the, um, teachers and the other staff members that we're gonna need for the struggling. Also, um, Dr. Burden's recommending a behaviorist for, uh, district leaders, that's gonna be a staff member. Uh, currently, we have a professional service that comes in on a flat kind of basis toward the certain students. So, if we're gonna implement our own autistic program that is recommended by Dr. Burden, Dr. McQuaid, that we have our own behaviors. Again, the monies that we have set aside for tuitions will be reallocated so that we can support the personnel force that will be associated with creating these, uh, students back for this year. Um, another program that, uh, Dr. Burden would like to see implemented is the community-based instruction. Dr. Burden, would you like to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah.
Well.
I, you know, I'm an interim director, so I've been in seven different districts the last few years. And, and I came here, um, and it was that we have a fairly large high school, fairly large special population, and zero students. You know, you might call it a work-study relationship, so we might call it a traditional work-study. And I, we have students, um, who are not, uh, college bound, who are not, uh, occasionally, you know, both tech type of students who still we are responsible in each of our, uh, transitional meaningful life experience after high school. And so, one of the things we wanna do is restructure some of the things that are going on in our high school now so that we can, uh, provide an opportunity for students to have all the, officially the CBI, community-based instruction. But you think of it as a work-study. So, they go to school in the morning, they have meaningful jobs in the afternoon. We wanna reassign some of our specialized teachers, um, to, to be community-based, uh, transition coordinators and some of our teacher assistants to be job coaches. Uh, it's relatively a, I consider to be a minor increase. We have to basically take one of our part-time teachers and make that position a full-time position or we have to have existing resource that we can use to, uh, uh, to make this happen. So, that's one of the things that, and actually, as a coincidence, you know, Mr. Hessler and I worked together in, 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 uh, Northern Valley. And my, my big experience with this was when we got lawyers, thirty or forty students out in the community-based instruction. They, of course, we have a million buses, they didn't have a million buses. They had their own bus, and we had a transition coordinator, job coaches. And that's where I learned how to decollet out doing that. So, it, it's, it's really gonna be a win-win, but, uh, a really minimal cost, I would say, to me.
Um, Dr. Burden, Mr. Resika also spoke about some of the new, uh, elective courses that we, that we decided to roll out, so, um, we're going, we should be working on increasing the, the last for education component, like the, uh, of the, you know, for, for teachers. Iris, do you wanna tell about that for a second?
Um, there are, there are so many ways in which we can use the role function, um, not just for email, uh, Gmail, but also, um, there are many adaptations for recording for students who kind of, to, to, to roll it out, a lot of those opportunities for students shortly. We, uh, right now have, I'm not sure if this is ever, four or five people who are certified, who attended certification, um, training for.
The December one?
Yes.
It would have like twelve of us, great teachers who went on overtime. Two Saturdays at least.
Two Saturdays, uh, CBI, CBI, CBI. Um, um, it's, uh, oh, I'm going to have, we're inviting, um, three teachers next mo- next week to come to the meeting and show you what we do does and how they use it in their classrooms, how they don't just use it as a chapter, but how they actually use it to, uh, work with students in the classroom as well as once, once they're home, they're gonna find that really exciting. The education committee was so happy to hear that teachers were willing to come and talk to them and asked if they would come to the forum, so we'll have it for you.
Uh, we talked about phasing in the STEM program. We did some work on the, uh, the one room that, um, Mrs. Ryan will, uh, kinda designated for her STEM, STEM program and, uh, some, uh, specific statement there, cleaned it up a little bit and now we're ready to fill it up with furniture and get a program going at Macbeth's school. And I think it's timely too because the county, the state county is working on, putting a whole STEM building down at the state county tech. And I think in order for us to, uh, continue to make West Hookett schools attractive, we have to be able to provide them with opportunities that they don't have to vote down to the state county tech or, or some of those. Um, and also, the tech may, uh, talked a little bit last week about wireless upgrades. Um, we are putting in an application, or we, we, we put in the application to get funding by the rate, uh, schools and library, which is federal funding. Um, there is a, a hand-carry resolution to approve these wireless upgrades. Um, and wireless upgrades, uh, the contract that we, we have to sign the contract in order to get the funding in the fifteen six- sixteen school year, but we won't know if the funding is approved until the summer. So, the contract that, that we're hopefully going to approve this evening is contingent upon our receiving the funding in, uh, the summertime. And our technology budget, um, does not include, uh, the wireless upgrades. But if in fact that does materialize in the summer, um, we'll be reallocating money from our technology budget in order to do that. Um, the, the total cost is about four hundred and. Um, the, the total cost is about four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and that would be, um, to run two cable runs, uh, where, where we're lacking, and all-new access points, uh, and the Meraki access points, which give you a five-year license, you buy one year and they'll give you five years on the licensing for the wireless, and it would be a new controller. So, um, our cost would be about sixty percent of that, so we're talking about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars out of the four hundred and forty-one thousand dollar investment. So, we would be remiss if we did not apply for the E-Rate funding, and unfortunately, we have to follow their rules, which say that they need to sign contract by March twenty-fourth. Um, but we do have the caveat in the contract that says if we do not eventually receive the E-Rate funding, then that wireless upgrade won't take place. So, that's for the board to consider, um, this, this evening. Capital projects, quickly, uh, some of the projects that we have slated in the, uh, in this, in this budget are the Westbrook School and Paradise Millers School boiler replacement. That's using rod grant money, which we're receiving forty percent back from the state of New Jersey. Um. It would be under Fund Twelve. Um, I could show, I tell you a little bit. Okay, I can touch you on that. Um. Uh, the pre, Peakhead Boiler is seven hundred ninety-three thousand, oh, forty-six, we're getting back three hundred and seventeen thousand, two eighteen, from the state. And the Westbrook is five hundred thirty-six, oh, twenty-three, and we're getting back two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and nine from the state. But, you know, based upon, we're probably up to forty percent, so it depend, depends on the cost, you know, 'cause we have to apply for the university. But that's what they, uh, approved up to those numbers. Um, the science room upgrades, um, for the, the new labs. Uh, roof replacement at Westbrook School, the building that we're in here, um, is in there. Front step replacement at Westmoff, at Westmofford High School in various parking lots, and you have to really be careful when you're coming up into Westbrook School because you could lose your car in one of those craters. And the weather's finally getting nice, that at least we can fill in the, the podbells and, and get them taken care of, make them safe until we can get, uh, some recanted, uh.
When do you think we're gonna get back on the science rooms, because, nothing?
Nothing. Science room is all capital outlet.
Okay.
Um, when the rod grants went into effect, um, we had a thirty-day window in order to fly for the, um, rod grants, and that was two years ago. So, that's why we did the boiler replacement, because they have levels of funding, and so we did, um, life safety issues, but we know that the boilers are life safety and they wouldn't be able to tell us no. Um. The tax, the current tax will be a fifty-three million, oh, four two eight three seven. Um, we've paid Sue in our council, um, two thousand and seven, eight, one, two. Um, that's also including debt service. Now, the debt service was on, that was already, uh, approved, and regardless of anything, debt service has to be paid. With the proposed budget, uh, fifty-four million, one oh three, six ninety-four, the, um, school tax, including debt service, would increase ninety-eight dollars and six cents per year. One thing I want you to understand about the proposed budget that we have here tonight and that you have to vote on, it's a preliminary budget. Required by law has to go down to the county office. You have between tonight and April twenty-eighth to, um, talk about it, question it, reduce it, increase it. Um. So, until April twenty-eighth, when we have a public hearing, it's not casting, still. So, um, I encourage you to ask questions. I encourage you to, um, be comfortable, and, uh, as I said to the Budget and PYES Committee, um, we can talk about it at the next three meetings until the, um, the market for budget that is normally, uh, present, uh, you know, uh, available for the fifteen sixteen school year. But the budget that we sent down to the county this week is the budget that gets advertised to the public before the public can. County goes through it and they have to approve what we said.
Yeah, one, one of the, uh, yeah, yeah, this is one of the things, you know, we don't like to talk about because it sounds like a complaint,
Yes.
but you have to remember that every year, we get hit with some type of a mandate that's unfunded. Uh, if we look back over the last three years, the, the unfunded mandates were for the whole new teacher observation piece, which is quite expensive. Uh, and it's not just a one-shot pay-for-the-pack, it's learn the program and do it. It requires teachers and staff members to come together over the summer for more training. We look at the technology aspect of, uh, what has happened with the park assessments. A tremendous amount of money was spent on technology, and we have to continue to spend that money just to, to stay in the game, so to speak. Um, so again, the state always comes to us with all these plans that we really don't, we don't have input, truly. Uh, but we do have to follow what's required, and there's, there's no check attached to that, you know, coming from them saying, and here's this pot of money that you can have to make this work. Uh, so it's not, again, we're talking about sustainability, so once you start these programs in order to sustain them, you're still spending a lot of money. Uh, we try to, as Iris pointed out before, we try to take some of the training and do a turnkey in district, uh, using our own people who are competent and feel comfortable enough to work with staff members. But low and behold, it's a large expense. Uh, there are professional develop, development programs, again, that are mandated that every teacher, every staff member in the building have to go through. It can be from suicide prevention, it's HIP policy, training. None of this is cheap. Uh, we looked at, uh, just a few months ago, uh, a company called Hipster, which will actually document your HIP reports and, and really keep data based on the types of things that are going on, which again, when we report to the state of New Jersey, we have to know what we're reporting. We can't just write down that, you know, so-and-so called so-and-so a name, and that was the end of that. They want more specifics, so it's requiring us to collect data in a formal way. So again, we're spending more money, and none of that's even reflected, so it's, you know, just keep that in mind as well. Uh, also, I have to tell you that, you know, I came into the district, um, a couple of days in November and started full swing on December first. And walking in the door, one of the first things that, uh, we spent working, you know, across from Barbara's Conference, in Barbara's Conference Room, was, uh, looking at the budget, and again, talking to the principals and supervisors, and really listening to their concerns. I can tell you that this budget is based off of student needs and what the goals of the district are, that's basically it. We're not trying to incorporate anything here that's fluff, um, looking at the buildings, these are old buildings for the most part. They have had no work or upkeep in a long time. Uh, when I came to visit this building for the first time, I spoke to the principal and I said, show me where your leaks are, figuring that she'd shown me two or three leaks. She gave me a schematic of the building with all red dots, and sure enough, I walked around the building with her, and indeed, there are leaks in all those locations. So, we have some big problems that we have to address, and, uh, it's time to do it. As you can see, some of the money, uh, some reimbursements from rod grants will be in effect. Unfortunately, those are still around. Uh, and we look at some other pieces, just talking about the technology from the E-Rate, so on and so forth. So, it's just, uh, that's where we are. We wanna give the students the best that we possibly can. And my last, my last slide is Happy St. Patty's Day. Help Westbrook Township Public Schools leper town to fill our bucket of gold. Now, when I say our bucket of gold, we're just looking for money to sustain what we, that's it. We don't wanna run into deficit. We wanna make sure we have what we need. Thank you, and I thank Barbara for the wonderful job, Iris, anybody for, for the representation.
I have one more question. And I'm sorry, I just, this is the first one I've seen. The, uh, overall budget has gone up one percent, the tax, tax has gone up two percent. Uh, benefits go up three point five percent, it is, they do. Does that, actually, I guess I have two questions, hopefully they'll go through. Does the increased cost of benefits reflect Cadillac tax for Cadillac benefits plan? And the other question, the one element that goes up quite a bit is administration, which goes up two hundred and twenty thousand, which is five percent, the highest of all. Does that include additional administration staff, or why so much administration?
Um, this past year, um, we added, uh, supervisor testing and another assistant principal supervisor, or, or not assistant supervisor. So, um, basically, with the, the testing requirement, um, we almost hesitated and we have, uh, basically, we have some testing.
They have all mandates again, you can do it.
Uh, health benefits, uh, Cadillac tax, Cadillac tax doesn't always go back until twenty eighteen. And, um, so, it doesn't look like that. We don't really know what that's gonna mean at all.
Mr. [inaudible].
Okay. Any other questions? So, on the button.
All I can say, uh, is to reinforce the fact that, um, it's a work in progress. We have to send something down to the county today, or this week, um, that does not, that cannot be adjusted between the, the eight and twelve.
I have one more question. Um, even services. We go from two thousand thirteen, one sixty-four, two thousand fourteen, one seventy-eight, this year is eighteen. We've got negotiations starting, is that a ridiculous number? And I'm sure those negotiations, unless we're extremely lucky, are gonna carry over past June thirtieth. And then again, is that number accurate? And, and, and I was reading something under the, um, the statutes that says if we historically don't fund a line item correctly, 'cause I remember in these previous years, we had alwa-, we had always transferred money in. And I just wanna make sure that we're putting enough money in that line item. I, I think that, uh, looking back, um, and, and looking at some of the line items for future judgments against the district that are pending, um, I don't know if these, these numbers are, are, are accurate whatsoever.
There, well, there's a separate line item for future judgments against the district, and we do have one, and that's why that went up significantly.
Correct, correct.
As far as funding, but, you know, line items incorrectly every year, we go through a mid-year budget review, that's not been a problem here. Um, and, um, we've, we've tried to maintain, um, our, our legal bills, you know, minimize them as much as possible. Yes, we are going with implications, but, um, that doesn't mean that we're going to exceed, um, the monies that we have set aside. So, again, um, I would prefer to put money in other areas, and then if, I mean, if that takes moving money into the legal services that we do that, but we'd also have to pull from other administrative accounts, 'cause you can't just transfer money into administrative accounts. There's, there's limits, somebody's there.
Oh, I, I, and I was reading that as well, that there's limits as far as, you know, percentages of transfers and all that. And I, you know, um, that I'm aware of, Barbara, but, um, when I, when I look at historically what we've done, and we're constantly transferring money in to those line items, and what I'll do is I'll email you what I read so that you know what I'm talking about, but, um, or what I'm referring to in, in the statutes. But when, when I, when I hear that, uh, we, we watch our legal bills, I, 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 I almost kinda got a laugh at that. Um, you know, when, when there's research done to see if you can, uh, charge with me with impersonating a board, uh, member for comments made before I was appointed, and for what you did to Mr. Drew.
What does this have to do with the budget, Mr. Burden?
No, it's, we're talking about saving money.
You had an opportunity to bring that up in budget and finance, so.
What's that?
Let's keep it directed at the budget.
No, you stopped us, Marilyn, you stopped us from that, you stopped that meeting from going forward.
And not start calling names and bringing things up.
I'm not calling names, I'm not calling anybody names.
We all know copies of the minutes, we all know what happened. So, unless there's further questions for you with the budget, let's open it up to other board members that might have questions.
Go ahead, they, other board members might have questions, they can add.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the budget as it stands right now?
All at this time?
Thank you.
Do they have any phone calls in mind? Excuse me?
Nothing, Mr. Burden's talking to his brother.
Uh, okay.
Um, Madam President?
Yes, Mrs. Ryan.
We're, we're getting close to nine thirty, can we extend, uh, executive session for, uh, make it nine forty?
I think nine forty-five.
Nine forty-five?
Nine forty-five.
All right, I'm, I'm dealing with Joe here, can Joe make nine forty-five?
Okay. Please, a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, then we're going to move on to, um, back to petitions and requests. Uh, we closed it before, and since Mrs. Francisco gave us the preliminary, uh, budget presentation along with Mr. Resica, I'm gonna open, or state open, so is there anybody from the public that would like to speak regarding anything on the agenda at this point?
Seeing that, I'd like to move to close petition and request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How many opposed? Okay, um, I need a motion to adopt, adopt.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Including the hand-carry?
Including the hand-carry of item number two under budget and finance.
I will second that again.
So, you're doing one and two?
Any expression?
This should be separate.
It's just to adopt the agenda?
Just, yes.
Oh, it's just to adopt the agenda?
Okay.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, we're adopting the agenda.
Just adopting the agenda, yes.
Mr. Drew, would you like to move, um, items under budget and finance for special action, please?
Uh, I'd like to move one, uh, one and two separately, but I can move the, uh, item number one first.
Is the second, is the item number?
Second.
Any questions regarding item number one?
Is that a discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
Yeah, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Yip?
Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you, Barbara. It's a very complex puzzle. Um, sorry, it's a very complex puzzle. I don't think it's easy at all. Um, I think there are not very many people who can do well with this, and it reflects considerable expertise to have done this, and thank you. I think we're lucky to have somebody that can go through all this. Um, beyond that, I'd like to discuss, I don't think it's like, um, in general.
Could you put your microphone on to the, to the, to the.
Sorry, usually my voice carries.
You have the radio.
I'll, I'll try. Um. Since I've been here, I've looked at a number of things about Westmofford, and there are sing, things that are maybe obvious, maybe they're not. In twenty-five years, we have had virtually no growth at all in population in Westmofford. In nineteen ninety, there were twenty-five thousand.
In nineteen ninety, there were twenty-five thousand four hundred eighty people, twenty-five years ago. Now there are twenty-five thousand nine hundred something. There are many reasons why we've had no growth, but the reality is we've had no growth. If you go look on the internet, and it's very simple, just Google, uh, property tax rates by county. What you come up with are several hits. One is a Forbes article that lists property tax rates by county. And there are a few others. But at the end of the day, there are many ways to measure this. Westchester County has highest property taxes in the country, Westchester County, New York. They pay the most property taxes. Uh, Camden County, New Jersey pays the highest rate. Passaic County pays the highest percentage of income. So we take an average person in Passaic County, you need an average home, their property taxes, and we pay nine percent of income in property taxes. And it is the highest in the entire United States. Um, which I think is, you know, and, and, and people feel that. We seem to continue to increase school taxes at a higher rate than any of the other taxes in West Milford. And just for example, in two thousand one, we increased school taxes, the school portion of property taxes, five point eight seven percent. Two thousand two, seven percent. Two thousand three, six point seven percent. Two thousand four, three point eight percent. Two thousand five, six point eight percent. Two thousand six, four point nine percent. Two thousand seven, four point nine percent. Two thousand eight, four point two percent. Two thousand nine, two percent. Two thousand ten, three point nine percent. Two thousand eleven, two point eight percent. Twenty twelve, one point eight. Of course, then the government have limited that. And now we're increasing property taxes by two percent, which still seems like a lot. But at least it's not higher than that. That is troubling for many reasons. One, no population growth. No growth in the number of ratables in West Milford. Decline in enrollment, a lot, twenty-five percent. And the school property taxes just keep going up. It seems to me that the reason that they're going up two percent this year is because that's the most we could raise. And I have to wonder if the law said three percent, would we raise it by three percent? If it said one percent, would we raise it by one percent? Now, it's a tough situation. None of us wanted to create this. And I compare it, if you will, to, uh, New York City. When, as New York was growing, they set aside land in Central Park and said, that's gonna be the park for everybody. It was a real good idea. And West Milford is kind of the park for New Jersey. They set this aside, said you can't grow. And the difference is, they told us, we have to pay for all the upkeep in New Jersey's park. So it'd be if, like if they'd left ten homes in Central Park and said, you can still live there, but you gotta pay for everything. So we got kind of a raw deal, I think. There was supposed to be money in the high tax to compensate for our lack of growth. It's in the law, but there's no money there. We don't get it. So we gotta bear the burden of this. Um, in talking to people, taxpayers around town, some of these are sad stories. One of my neighbors is in his mid-eighties. He's lived in West Milford for, I believe, twenty-five years. Retired from IBM. And he lives in a house that's nine hundred square feet. He thought when he retired, that, you know, he was gonna be comfortable, he had planned that out. And now he's at the point, because of his property tax increase, he's gotta move. In his mid-eighties, he's gotta move. That's just a sad situation. Um, I know another family in town who lived here all of their lives, and they'd like to give their homes to their kids. And their kids have said, we can't take it, because we can't afford the property taxes. I don't know what they're gonna do with it. But I do know that taxpayers in West Milford are weary of the constant tax increases. I think we've got to look at ways that we can help with that. And there's no question, we've gotta do a better job to meet the challenges of the next century, with science, math, education, uh, engineering training. Um, and we gotta do a better job with our, with our kids. Education is the key to their future. Their ability to make more money depends on how well we educate them. That's a real, kinda, in the current case, one of the things that strikes me is that we've got quite a few capital costs. And we're putting the capital costs into the operating budget. As a homeowner, um, now I know there are people in Ridgewood or wherever in New Jersey, that when they need a new car, they just plop down cash and buy a new car. I'm not one of those people. If I need to spend money on an asset that I'm gonna use over some period of time, I gotta take a loan. When I had to repair a roof, put in two new heaters in a home, I had to take a loan. Can't pay for that with cash. What I'm recommending, and I would like to make an amendment to the motion, um, that I would like to look at, taking all of the capital items that we can, removing them from the operating budget, operating expenses, and putting them in capital budget. Now, I kinda looked at this, um, and remember I've asked him about this several times. We've got a payment in twenty fifteen of five forty-two on the bond, twenty sixteen, five twenty-five, twenty seventeen, three ninety-eight. We already know that we have to ask for money to repair the roofs in two of our schools. This is unacceptable. There's just no other way to put it. We can't send our kids to schools that the weather comes in on them and ran on them. So we're gonna have to ask for that money either way.
So we need a motion then for me and Drew?
I'm, I'm trying to make this one.
We can't though. Don't we already, don't we already have a motion?
Yeah, the motion, the motion's on.
I'm amending the motion.
He's making a motion to amend.
So I wanna remove from this budget, um, the, the capital items that we can, and add them to a capital budget for which we're going to look for bonds. And my recommendation, the way to look at this, is that we pay off the existing bonds early. We bond over, I believe we can do, and I looked at MACRS and various accounting methods, we can do this over fifteen years or twenty years. And what we can wind up doing by doing this is, in fact, it's, it's effectively a refinance, just like a homeowner would do a refinance. All right? We extend the period on, on what we've already got, include the additional items. And I believe that our capital expense will be about the same, or go down. And we will remove the capital items from the budget, so that we don't have to have a tax increase. That is my motion. Second.
Okay.
Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One thing I think that you need to recognize is that, um, the budget, we've adjusted the budget by two percent, the tax levy cap by two percent. But legally, we're allowed to go higher than that. Last year, we left six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars on the table. We could've increased our tax levy by that amount of money last year, and we did not. That's statutory adjustments that were allowed. This year, we have seven hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars in our bank cap that we can increase our budget by. We're not asking for that. I think that we're being, uh, the administration is being cognizant of the concerns that you have. We're, we're concerned about the taxpayers. And we're doing what we can to maintain quality programs at the minimum cost and impact of taxpayer. Regarding your request to remove the capital item from the budget, unfortunately, and I explained this to you this afternoon, we don't have the same latitude that the municipality has. We just can't go out to bond. The only time that we can go out, we have four times a year, five times a year that we can go out to bond. That's it. We have to go by public referendum. So, if we remove all the capital items and roll it into one referendum, we're not gonna get anything done for at least another year, maybe two.
There's still two point five in the excess capital reserve account. So you can get those started.
But that, well, you can't start any, we already have that money slated for those accounts. Are you talking about the debt service? What, we have that money set aside to do those capital projects that are in there. Didn't you just say that you wanted that removed?
The capital spending should be removed from the operating budget, become capital spending that we use the excess capital reserve to initiate. We go ask the voters, I can tell you, if we, if we now ask them for a two percent increase, or, or just don't ask them, slap it on them, and then go ask them for the money to fix these roofs.
You can't, I can remove the capital items from the budget, but then you can't do anything with those things until after you have a successful bond referendum.
The first family that can do that is November?
September.
September?
There's, there's five times a year that you can do it.
September.
Right. September's the first time. I'm not sure if the bond council could get everything up in time by September. Probably would be December.
We, we have to start working on it in April in order to have a vote on April, September twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it would, it would probably not be till December, the, the next day of the election campaign.
My, my concern with that, too, is the fact that, um, okay, so we stay flat, and then you put the referendum out there, and it doesn't pass.
And.
Possibility.
And the two million dollars that's excess surplus has to go to support the budget. And if you're not using it for capital, you're using it for program. And then if you don't have two million dollars next year to support program, you have to cut two million dollars out of your program.
So this budget spends the entire two point five million excess surplus? I don't think it does.
Yes, it does. It's support, it's a revenue. It's supporting the, it's supporting the information that's in that budget document. So, that two point five million dollars is a revenue source to support all of the items that are included in that budget, including all of your capital expenditures. It's easier.
So if we do that at the end of this, you're saying we're gonna have zero excess surplus?
I have to put, I have to put two million, six thousand dollars that was audited excess surplus in here. It has to go in the budget. And if we do that to support program as opposed to capital expenditures, then what we're gonna do is next year, if I don't have two million dollars to support the program, I'm gonna have to cut, either raise taxes, because then I'll have over two million dollars in bank cap, or I'm gonna have to cut two million dollars worth of programs.
So you're saying that the fifty-three million without the increase will not support the operating budget without the capital improvement?
The fifty-three million will, but you're gonna be removing all of your capital expenditures. And then that two million dollars is gonna support program. If you take out all your capital costs, you're gonna be supporting programs.
You have to spend.
We have to spend. It has to support the budget. It's required. It's a reserve that has to support the budget.
How do we get it back, then, two million back every year? So we're, we're saying we're gonna have zero at the end of this?
We have surplus at the end of the school year by not spending out the budget, by appropriating money for gas and electric. And then if you have a mild winter, you don't spend it. Or you, you budget money for gasoline and diesel fuel, and then the prices go down, and you're gonna have excess money. And all that excess money drops out during the audit on June thirtieth. And that's what you have that you reserve to go forward into the next budget cycle.
Well, yeah, we're getting, you and I can discuss this maybe off, off, outside of this meeting. What I'm trying to say is that I believe we can have all of the operating spending that we want, everything in here, all the programs. We think we're gonna have to go bond for the roofs anyhow. Let's take what, what we can, include out of the operating budget without a tax increase, and add it into the bond issue, and also call the existing bond so that the effective bond payment over the next fifteen to twenty years will not increase at all. I believe we can have it all, doing it that way, without increasing taxes.
Hang on.
You're, you're saying, though, you're, you're betting on a, a bond passing being voted on, too. You're also betting fifty-fifty chance of a bond failing. So you gotta do, think about those consequences, too.
I think you got a hundred percent cha- chance if you increase their taxes by two percent.
Mrs. Orion?
And we're gonna have leaky roof.
We're fast approaching nine forty-five, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session at ten P M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mrs. Orion. At ten o'clock, we extended.
Oh, wow, 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 sorry.
We're gonna go into executive session at ten o'clock. Mr. Bailey?
Mrs. President, I request that we call the question and vote on this amendment, please, and let's move this train down the track, if you please.
Yeah, right, right now, pending is a motion to amend the budget resolution to remove the capital items from the operating budget and then place them to the reserve. So, the only question I have, if that passes, Barbara, would you have the time to do that before the required timeline is submitted?
I have to.
Okay.
I have to do it this week.
Okay, well, that's the pending motion. So this is not to approve the budget, it's just to approve the amendment of the resolution.
Would, would it be better, I'm sorry, would it be better to, to go with this with the two, with the two percent? And then, in our meeting, sit down and, and trim this down?
Possibly vote against the, and then, I think.
Yeah, the thing, I think, well.
We have till eight twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Okay, this is a vote on the amendment to remove the capital items from the budget. Uh, Mr. Babbitt?
No.
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Cappy?
No.
Miss O'Brien?
No.
Mrs. Schultz?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so there is a pending motion still to pass resolution number one.
Correct. Do you need a second on that?
No, it's already pending.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but we're, we're.
Mr. Bailey?
Mrs. President, I asked a question, please, and have a vote on it.
All right, we just voted on the amended.
We know that.
Okay, so now we're.
I'm gonna vote on the original motion.
Correct.
Joe was just explaining that it's on the floor, we have a first and a second, and now we're gonna do a wish vote.
Very smart man, Mr. Roosevelt. Thank you, Joe, for that implication. Now, I respectfully request a call of the question, please.
Mrs. Cappy?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
No.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Miss O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Mr. Bailey, would you like to take up on, uh, Budget and Finance?
Oh, thank you, Steve. I'd like to move item number two under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Green?
However, is there any reason why we, I think the company with Johnson Communications that we've used, how come, since they know our system so well, then built it, why would we wanna go with this, with this other, you know, firm?
When we submitted the four seventy for the e-refunding, we got, we had to accept proposals from the companies that were interested. Johnson Communication was one of the companies, but it was also a lot more costly. So Vivar stood its due diligence, he interviewed and walked buildings with a number of, of organizations. And, um, when everything was. And, um, when everything was vetted, um, the company that we have here, Corp BTS, was going to do the most for, um, the money. And the fact that we are looking to go with Muraki Access Points, um, which is a subsidiary of Cisco. Um, and they're giving the, um, the special deal of, we buy one year license and you get five years for the same price. Um, it, it turned out to be Corp BTS was, was the better, that was the advantage.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Mrs. Cappy?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappy, would you mind moving special action for education, please?
Yes, under education, I'd like to move item number one.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappy?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
And item number two will be, um, put on after executive session.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Brien, personnel?
Yes, I have one item this evening I would like to move and present to you at this evening.
You second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco? Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Cappy?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Nine forty-seven. Mrs. Cappy, would you mind, um, going over education, uh, next week's agenda?
Um, yes, under education, there are four items to consider for next week's meeting. Should be voted on.
Does anybody have any questions at this time regarding those items under education? How about, um, budget and finance?
Well, as spread before my colleagues, you can see at the next Board of Education meeting, next Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, there'll be a full docket of budget and finance items for our consideration and approval as we continue to work hard to move the West Milford Township School District forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions with regards to the items listed under budget and finance at this time? Seeing none, let's move to Mrs. O'Brien and Personnel, Student Affairs, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. The following items, the following thirteen items will be presented for anticipated approval at the regular meeting of March twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Anybody have any discussion or questions regarding the items of the personnel? Okay, seeing none. Go to policy. Mr. Babbitt?
Uh, next week, policy will be presenting one item for approval.
Any questions with regards to that? Okay, moving on to old business. Does anybody have any old business? Mr. Foodie?
Are we, um, anywhere with possibly, um, congrat- congratulating the kids from McPepper for Citizen of the Month? Have, are, are any decisions we made yet?
Not a decision, but we would like to look at that, unless we're done with the budget piece, but if I can, excuse me.
Okay.
Okay, for just a minute, because we still have some presentation by supervisors that are still coming in.
Okay.
So.
Those, yeah, actually, those presentations were put on hold because of the cancellation of the last couple of weeks.
Something will happen.
Anybody else have anything for old business?
Seeing none, like to close old business.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You? Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to new business. Mr. Foodie?
I would like our executive session, um, to be down in the back room where it used to be.
The room is ready.
We, we, yeah, we spoke to them last week about that.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure, because we've got people in the audience.
Yeah.
Instead of sending them out in the hallway with my chair. Thank you.
Anybody else in business?
Seeing none, need to close new business? Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes. For each petitioner, for a period of thirty minutes. And then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak at this time?
Seeing none, move to close petition and request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, um, somebody like to read the executive session statement?
Sure.
And move it.
At nine fifty-two P M, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs. The stu-, the superintendent serves to matters of attorney, applying for.
Second. We will be coming back for taking action, um, but all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.